2014 council meeting in order if you please rise for the pledge allegiance. Clerk please call the roll.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colosar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Move that the minutes of the May 27, 2014, regular meeting as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet two weeks from today. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have one meeting scheduled tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM in the multipurpose room. We're going to be discussing Police Department reorganization and sanitation rates.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I am scheduling a meeting when we return from recess in September.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and Sidewalks held a committee earlier this evening prior to Finance Committee to discuss curb installation and we're moving forward in that and there's no other meeting scheduled on that.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colzar.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's one item on the agenda this evening in reference to water and utilities and water rate increases and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have a few for Finance Committee. We have 14-124, adopt the downtown strategic plan, 14-125, Uptown Park sound system upgrades and fees, 14-126, budget amendments, 14-127, amending revocable use permit for Dominix, and 14-128, fair market value estimates, FMVE, West Smith reconstruction. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, the new city website is up and we're continuing to add information. If the public or council or anybody has any recommendations of things they'd like to see that they're not currently seeing, you may have noticed Friday, we had a large banner for the Boyle Alert down on the southeast sector of town there. That worked very well, both to add it and when it was lifted. Also, the Memorial Day week, we had the trash schedule posted on there as well, so it seems to be very user-friendly and updatable even from phones or mobile devices. The Friday night band concerts kicked off last Friday night. They'll go every Friday night in June and July starting at 8:30. This upcoming Friday night is going to be a special Flag Day concert. That's going to be June 13th at 8:30. And just a reminder that parking is prohibited and posted as a private tollway zone for the parking lot on the north side of Second Soul, Eli's, Marie's Cafe, Lager &amp; Vine, and Four Ladies &amp; More, as well as that little area, kind of alley-like, between Four Ladies &amp; War &amp; Lager &amp; Vine. It's a private lot, it's posted as such, and we're trying to encourage people to avoid that area, use the street parking, the county administration, the court lots, as well as any of our city lots, City Hall, and the Medina Municipal Court during non-court hours. The Medina County Veterans Hall Capitol Campaign is having a couple more of the dining-for-veterans events in Medina, and this is where a portion of the proceeds go to, is set aside for renovations to Medina County Veterans Hall on North Broadway Street. The next two events are June 23 at Buffalo Wild Wings from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and it's both for dining in and carry-out, and 20% of the proceeds go to the campaign. And then July 8 at Sully's Irish Pub from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, dine-in or carry-out, with 10% of the proceeds going to the campaign. And we also have a list of the ongoing events posted here at City Hall. And then last, I'd like to congratulate Police Chief Patrick Baraducci for two different incidents. One, he's been selected as a keynote speaker for the Ohio State Highway Patrol Basic Academy graduation for patrol officers. We have two officers down there right now. The graduation will be Friday, September, strike that, Friday, June 27 of this year. And the chief was invited by the Colonel to be the keynote speaker. He was also invited and selected as one of 30 law enforcement executives in our country to take part in a week-long International Association of Chiefs of Police and MacArthur Foundation Law Enforcement Leadership Institute on Juvenile Justice. This institute will provide a broad immersion into cutting-edge concepts in order to effectively lead juvenile justice reform and collaboration. That event is scheduled for September 15 through the 19th, and the IACP is paying for all travel, hotel accommodations, and all of the needs of the attendees there. So congratulations to the chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Department's been working on the budgets. As you know, the next set of budgets was submitted to council last week. We worked with the department heads to get those out. There's a number of items on the agenda tonight that came from Finance that we had input on that I'll be speaking on when we get to them. The tax budget will be at the next Finance Committee meeting, so we're preparing that. And this week, just to let all of you know, tomorrow I'm speaking to the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers up in Sandusky, and then the rest of Tuesday through Thursday, I'll be in Bowling Green as a volunteer at the American Legion Buckeye Boys State Program working with boys that get elected city auditor, city treasurer. So I won't be available, but I will be available by email, and of course, Rich is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, State Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick note for council and the public, our next Economic Development Committee meeting is tomorrow morning at 7:45 AM here at City Hall in the multipurpose room. And our guest speaker is Patrick Patton, our city engineer, who's going to talk about water infrastructure improvements. Right, Patrick? That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to let everybody know about our boards and commissions, meeting this Thursday, June 12, starting, we're just having a Historic Preservation Board and Planning Commissioner, no agenda items for Board of Zoning Appeals, and that starts at 5:00 PM with the Historic Preservation Board in the multipurpose room in the lower level of the City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ruraly Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we completed our spring tree planting on Timber Trail, Old Farm Trail, Jasper Lane, and various other locations. In total, we planted 108 trees. They were mostly ash tree replacements. Reminder for the residents, this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is the Medina Invitational Soccer Tournament. There will be traffic control on Route 3 to help ease traffic during the event. I would also like to ask residents to be patient as we work through operating the splash pad system at Ray Miller and work the kinks out. Lastly, the Pizza Palooza is on the square this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon at the Board of Control, the board elected to award a contract for the Gunniston Street reconstruction. This project was awarded to Tri-More Construction. We look forward to them starting here in the next several weeks. That project will be completed probably early in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to report that we're cleaning and repairing inlet basins throughout the city. Crews are still patching defected areas within our streets, and we sent or made contact with 40-plus property owners with respect to high grass complaints. We've mowed many of the complaints, and property owners have taken care of some as well. Additionally, I want to wish our city engineer a happy early birthday for Friday. I understand he's turning 50.
Happy birthday, Pat.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli. I'm sure he appreciates you saying his age. Notice of communications petitions, there's none unfinished business, none. Induction of visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to the induction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Nobody? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 98-14, an ordinance amending Section 91704, the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to water rates. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colzar.
I'd like to comment briefly on this. This recommendation stemmed from Utility Rate Review, which is a group of representatives in the city that could be a property owner, business owner, a renter, somebody from the business community, but they make up essentially a mirror of our community and provide a recommendation to the city administration and council about, we provide them the data on current situation with our, for instance, here are our water, and they make a recommendation on increases if needed to try to resolve our situation. Their recommendation was a 5% increase to our water consumption rates for both commercial and residential. If you recall, in the past, we've been trying to be consistent with our water rate increases to somewhat reflect the increases we get from Avon Lake. The city of Medina's water supply comes from Avon Lake Municipal Water Plant, and we, as a city, we try to keep our water funds running as thin as possible. We don't want to carry too much of a surplus. We do want to get projects done and be able to provide water to our customers. We had a 3% increase in place for this year that went into effect January 1 of this year, and we weren't anticipating to do another increase until January 1 of 2015 because of some situations with increases from Avon Lake of 4%, or 4.7% that will go into effect next month, and a unanticipated capital improvement to the Spieth Road storage tanks, which the city essentially is part owners with the county. We have two $5 million, or five, two $5 million gallon storage tanks on Spieth Road that are, I think, are 12, 13 years old, but already need recoating of the paint, which me as a resident and a councilman, a little frustrated that capital improvement to that magnitude already needs some touch-up, but it is what it is, and the county's going to be, or the city's going to be on the hook for an estimated $400,000, $500,000,000 to help correct that situation. So because of those two factors and us running a thin budget, and there's an increase that's needed. Almost half of the money that is generated each year, we have debt service that we have to pay back for the installation of the water system that we have. If some don't recall, the city of Medina used to get their water supply from Lake Medina. Well, with the growth of our community, planners back at that time decided to tie in to Lake Erie for our water supply, and that costs money. We had to run, get a loan for that. So the majority, or I would say half of the money that's sent out is to pay for that capital improvement to get the water down here from Lake Erie, and also just for paying Avon Lake for the water that we use. So on the other part of that, we're limited on adjustments we can make on the city's end. You know, we got to supply good water and reliable water to our customers, and we also have capital improvements to do as well. So the cities, we're on a tight budget, 5%. What we have in front of us is a request for 5% increase that will go in effect August 1st, so you would see this increase on your August bills. Now normally, we try to do a decent amount of notification to our customers, especially our commercial that are usually planning a year in advance for the, where they're allocating their money. We're in a rock and a hard place with this one, and it's unfortunate that we can't plan that far out or give them that notice, but we're running out of money. So we have to do something. Utility Rate Review reviewed this, and went on to Water and Utilities. We reviewed this as well and passed this on through Finance and now here in the floor of council, but this ordinance is requesting a 5% increase starting August 1st for the water consumption rates. And just to throw it out there too, we have another increase coming from Avon Lake that begins January 1, 2015, of another 4.6%. I know Utility Rate Review's going to be meeting again here in the near future to discuss that, but we're, like I said before, we're in a rock and a hard place. It's needed. We want to continue to supply good quality water to our customers with a limited amount of disturbance. I know we have water breaks here and there, but that costs money as well. But I know I went on and on about this, but the gist of it is, is that the city's accounts are running out of money, and we need the 5% increase to sustain through this year and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 98-14 passes seven zero.
Resolution 99-14, a resolution of the Council of the City of Medina, Medina County, and the State of Ohio certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated in the funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy the obligation according to the attached sheets. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the health risk assessments, and we need the approval. The emergency clause is because the work has been done, we want to get the vendor paid.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution 99-14 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 100-14, an ordinance amending ordinance number 108-11, passed July 11, 2011, relative to the agreement with Rain Associates, Inc., for the preparation of the annual audit for the city of Medina. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for this change on the audit is that this year we had two, what are considered major federal programs, and without going into too great of detail on that, under federal statutes, you have to have an audit when you have federal programs. We do. Ordinarily, we only have one major federal program, so they only have to treat one as major. Because we had several large federal grants this year, we had two major programs, which requires a significant amount of additional audit time because they have to do those procedures on both of those programs instead of just one. The two programs are the Brownfields and the CDBG, and the emergency clause is because we're about to wrap up the audit and we want to get it done, and they can't do the work until it's approved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 100-14 passes seven zero.
Resolution 101-14, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development TREX transfer form for the division of liquor control for the property located at 221 South Court Street. Move to approve?
Second.
Ms. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been working with Whitney Harris, who is in the process of purchasing the 221 South Court Street building, which was formerly the Gramercy Gallery retail shop, and she is looking to establish a wine bar slash retail store there. The city is out of D1 and D2 liquor permits. She has located liquor permits in Mahoning County, and the fellow is willing to sell them. They're combined D1, D2, and D3. Ohio Revised Code does state that a permit can be transferred from one area to another for the purposes of an economic development project, which we feel that this is an economic development project because she will have the investment in the building, which has sat vacant for over a year. The renovations to the building, and then we met with her again today, and she indicated that she's an interior designer, that's her day job, and she will be converting the upstairs to office space. One of the things that I did want to mention that I forgot to mention at the finance meeting was she originally was going to establish this wine bar in Peninsula and worked on that project for about a year, and then found out that they didn't have, they needed her to put in some water treatment plant or something like that, so that whole thing fell through. And then she came to Medina in February for the ICE Festival and saw all the wonderful lights and was attracted to the city of Medina, so I just thought I would mention that to you, since we made that other investment. She is here this evening just to introduce herself and say a couple of things, so I'd like to turn it over to Whitney.
Thank you.
Hi. As Kimberly mentioned, I'm Whitney Harris, and this is Patrick Huth, and we are in the process of purchasing 221 South Court Street and are very excited about the backdrop of the city as well as the building for our business because we think it fits perfectly. I don't know if Kimberly shared our concept with you, but it's, I think it just really inkeeps with your philosophies and what you're doing with the city, so we're extremely excited.
Thank you, and welcome to the city of Medina.
And then the last thing is, Mr. Huber has reviewed the form for the mayor to sign, and he has said there are no issues with that, so I think we're good now.
Thank you. Is that true, Mr. Huber? Oh, okay, good. Just double checking. Is anybody else, any discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Coin. Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Resolution 101-14 passes seven zero.
Resolution 102-14, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a renewal of an existing tax of 2.2 mils in excess of the 10-mil limitation for the operation of an ambulance and emergency medical service. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple of things I want to make sure everyone understands about this. Because it's a renewal, it's not an increase in the tax. All the voters understand this is not an increase, it's just a continuation of the tax that's already existing for our LST emergency services. The other thing that's important currently is that the state of Ohio is phasing out the homestead exemptions and rollbacks, and if we, but they will still be honored for existing levies. A renewal, the way the statute is written, counts as an existing levy, so by doing a renewal on this, we preserve that for our taxpayers, saves the people of the city money, and doesn't have an impact on the revenue to the city. So we want to get this renewed. Again, no increase and continue to operate our LST service.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
I have to abstain from this one.
Anything else? Clerk please call the roll.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Abstain.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution 102-14 passes six yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 103-14, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for qualifications for the architectural design services for the Medina Municipal Courthouse. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I think this is coming through for meetings with the judge for the location, relocation of the current courthouse, and the first step in the process, of course, is to request for qualifications for the architectural design services, and once we do that, we can move to the second step of selecting an architect to design the courthouse. So this is the first step in the process to start the long, probably 24-month process of determining the type of court, size of the court, and we already know the location of the court, so this is the start of the process. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colzar.
Just council and administrations, where I'll be voting no on this because, one, I'm not real excited about the, this ordinance is site-specific, and I'm not real excited about the location that we're wanting to put this municipal court and the cost, overall cost of the court, so I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, the location of the court is right outside our, we're the parking lot of City Hall. Is there any other further discussion or comment?
Mr. President, I'll also be voting no, primarily because I'm not convinced that the cost, the projected cost anyway, is acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
No.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Excuse me. Ordinance 103-14 passes five yeas, two nays.
Ordinance 104-14, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of three 2015 Ford utility police interceptors from statewide Ford for the police department. Move to approve?
Second.
Chief Baraducci.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a continuation of the refurbishment of our police fleet. We're getting down to the wire with the old Crown Vics. Most of them now, I believe, are over 100,000 miles, so these will be well-received.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colzar.
Let's see if we can ask the chief just to explain, we've gone the direction of the
This is the second in a three-part enhancement to our dispatch system. This will enable dispatchers to have a script, as you wore, to follow during the taking of a call. And I'll tell you how important that is. We are already doing the emergency medical dispatch. The night of our big storm, if you'll remember right after council, we had over 600 calls for service come into two dispatchers. We had our newest dispatcher at the time was one of the two on duty. He handled two heart attacks using the priority dispatch software that we're talking about here and did an expert job. That's in the midst of 600 phone calls in a four-hour period. So it gives the dispatchers a script to follow, it automates the transmission of the data, and it makes sure that we are all on the same page in our protocols. They're all predetermined, so it's a much more efficient way to do business.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
I'd like to add to that, this, the script that is followed has been dispatching ambulances as fast as 21 seconds based on the questions, based on the way the answers come in. But also with it, it also tells that the ambulance, go ahead and go, but without lights and sirens. And that's an intangible benefit, especially to the residents along East Washington, where the ambulances are still going up and down the street, but without the sirens, so at nighttime, they get a little more sleep. I'm not going to say they don't get interrupted every night, or, you know, they have peaceful night every night, but there's less ambulance sirens going up and down the street. And also, without the lights and sirens, the chances of an accident at an intersection are reduced because of this. So those are the benefits that we also see from this, and we hope that this goes, flows into the police department as well. And for that, I'm absolutely voting for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will Clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 105-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 106-14, ordinance authorizing clerk of the court to solicit request for proposals, RFPs, for a new case management software for the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Any discussion? I guess this came from the clerk of court, Nancy Abbott, and she's requesting just to get some requests for proposals for a new computer software system in the court. I don't believe the court has had a new computer software system in many years. I'm not sure what the timing of this as far as the installation of it. Maybe it should be at the same time as the construction of the court, that has yet to be determined. But she's just requesting to get RFPs out there to start the process.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lamb?
This is what we just heard about last finance meeting?
Yes.
So why the emergency clause?
The RFP stated that they want the request back by July 15th. It was written to her.
This just came to us last finance meeting?
Correct.
And it could have come to us a month ago?
Anything could come to us many months ago, yes.
I'm on this one specifically.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Will Clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
No.
Motion passes... Oh, 5-2, sorry.
Any discussion, more discussion ordinance? Clerk please call the roll on your ordinance?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 106-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 107-14, ordinance amending ordinance number 157-11 passed November 14th, 2011 relative to an addendum to the master service agreement with Emergitech, Inc. pertaining to the PROQA priority dispatch interface for the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Chief Berducci?
Thank you, Mr. President. The interface that this speaks to is the software component between PROQA and Emergitech CAD that we have in place. We have one for the emergency medical. Now we'll have one for the police, and at some point when we do the fire, we'll need a third one. They're all individually configured to transfer the data.
Any discussion? Further discussion? Clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 107-14 passes 7-0.
Counsel comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, happy birthday, Pat. It's not that bad, trust me. It's not. Chief, congratulations on the honors that you're receiving there. Both of them are quite honor, quite an honor. Third, I'd like to thank the city departments, all of them, that had to deal with the, after our last council meeting, the heavy rains and the flooding situations we had. The police, the fire department, LST, the administration, all the department heads had to deal with, with the numerous calls that was received, not only the night of the heavy rains, but the subsequent days after with several unfortunate, several homes being flooded. Our, some of, a lot of our infrastructure is old, knock on wood. We don't have historical rains like that every day, but the homeowners that did suffer the losses in their property, personal property from the flooding, you know, we are sorry. The city's doing what they can to accommodate you and walk you through the process. But again, I really have to commend every department that had to deal with that. It was a job well done. We thought after this last winter that we'd seen the worst, but obviously we hadn't, so thank you.
Thank you. Any additional counsel comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Huber?
Our splash pad at Ray Millard Park opened May 29th, I believe. This past Thursday, we celebrated that grand opening with a cookout at the splash pad. I want to take a moment to thank the administration, especially Sandy Davis and Jansen Worley for helping host that cookout. I'd also like to thank the mayor for showing up and cooking hot dogs, and of course, Dino Picoli for showing up just to eat the hot dogs. And I'd also like to thank the kids and their families for showing up and being patient while we waited two years to get the splash pad open. The other thing I have is the second annual Ward 1 Community Block Party is scheduled for Sunday, July 13th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and will again be held at Ray Millard Park. This is a free family event for the residents, businesses, and organizations in Ward 1. Most of the activities this year will be held closer to the Huntington Street side. Last year, they were on the Minor Drive side. We want to do it on the Huntington side so that we can take advantage of the new splash pad. The parking will still be available at Minor Drive. We're trying to work out some details on how to shuffle people from one side to the other, especially the older folks, but those details will come out later on. I want to stress that this is a free event, free food, free entertainment. Skinny Moo, which is a local band favorite, will be performing. Free food, again, from local Ward 1 businesses, and we have several local nonprofit organizations that have already committed to attend, and they will be providing activities for people of all ages. If you have any questions, or if you know of anybody that would like to be a sponsor, they can feel free to contact me. My phone number is 330-416-1692, or email at bhillberg@medinahoh.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional counsel comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colzar?
Real quick here, by this time, usually this year, we've already had a, are scheduled to have a Champion Creek Stream cleanup. This year, I'm not going to do it until the fall, a couple reasons, but I've had some residents ask me if, when the cleanup's scheduled. We don't have an exact date yet, but it won't be until probably September before it gets, we'll have it before it gets too cold to be out there. But I have a couple other things I want to do this year instead of just going out and cleaning up the creek itself. We do make a positive impact, but there are some additional things in the works. So if anybody out there is wondering, it won't be until this fall, so, but I'll keep you informed. And also, our service director spoke about how the city's out cleaning up stormwater catch basins, and I just want to address the public that when you're out working in your yard and even just mowing your grass and you're blowing that grass into the street, please take some time to either broom it up or get the leaf blower out and blow that back in the yard. I mean, just the simple things as cut grass not only deter, or deteriorates the water quality in our stormwater, but also clogs up the catch basins that we use taxpayer money to go out and clean up. So if everybody can do their part to at least get your lawn clippings out of the yard or out of the street and back in the yard, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further counsel comments? I have one to remember on Wednesday, June 18th, we have a budget hearing. Everybody's excited about that, and the next council meeting, of course, will be on June 23rd. With that, the meeting's adjourned.